This is the Commissioner meeting of May 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center, Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
Okay.
Commissioner Carney is here too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Carney.
She's mad at me just for a roll call thing. I'm here.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. At this moment, I would ask you all to join me in a moment of silence tonight. I would like to remember the individuals who lost their lives in Fairfield, and I would like to do the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at number five, the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion. Okay, at this time, I would like to...
Well, I have a discussion on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm discussing something and then I'll go to you. Agenda item 13F. That is the amicus brief that we had. I have been informed that answers are not due back. The papers were filed, answers are not even due back until the 4th of June. So, we are going to reserve any action on that until we receive it and can review the answers that were returned. So, I'm asking for that to be removed and tabled for the moment. And Commissioner Yardley?
Appointments and resignations, acknowledging the appointment of a member to the Sussex County Community College Search Committee. I'd like a separate vote on that?
Yes.
I can't hear you. What number is that?
12A.
Yes, 12A. Yeah, I can't hear you either, Herb.
Yeah, you need to take that off when you speak.
Or talk into the mic.
Or just get into the microphone.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that. With that off, okay? Yeah, I'd like 12A as a separate vote, separate discussion.
Sure. Is there any other items? Okay, so I do have a motion and a second, but I do need now a motion to approve the agenda with 13F tabled and 12A aside for separate votes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Pass. Number six, proclamations, certifications, and presentations. This evening, we are acknowledging the names of these scouts. There's no scout present this evening, and a commissioner is actually present or has been present at these ceremonies live to present these awards to the scouts in front of their families during the formal ceremony. So, recognizing Eagle Scouts Joshua Rubenstein, Troop 276 from Byram Township, Adam Raffey, Troop 276, Byram Township, Tyler Paul Hermes, Troop 85, Andover, Newton, Travis Charles La Mason, Troop 85, Andover, Newton, Caitlin Hanafan, Troop 1150, Sparta, and Emily Brothman, Troop 1150, Sparta. Does any commissioner want to talk about their presentations?
I'll just mention, I had the opportunity on Saturday to present the formal proclamations to both Joshua Rubenstein and Adam Raffey. And that was a wonderful event to see their accomplishments and what they've been a part of in Byram and in their academic careers as well. Those are two outstanding young men who represent the youth of Sussex County tremendously well. And I told them, both myself and this board, look forward to hearing more about them and their future successes. So, it was a great event, and I was happy to be there.
Thank you.
Yes, I attended Tyler Paul Hermes and Travis Charles La Mason's celebration at the First Presbyterian Church on Sunday. It was fun to see a lot of younger scouts that were there. And often, when you go there and they have a lot of Eagles with them, but this time, they had a lot of young scouts as well. And it was nice to see the role models standing up there, talking about all the different events and activities that they went through in their journey to the position of Eagle Scout. And to me, I just found it so encouraging, you know, that the younger ones were looking up to these young boys and the young boys were looking up to their leaders and their families for all that support. And you just see these great kids with such strong character and such a desire to do some type of activity or help people in some way. And I saw that even as mayor, when I would go to the Eagle Scouts, they would come up to me. I could ask them anything. I said, "Could you do this for me?", and they would always be willing to do it. Oftentimes, they'd come up to me and say, "I have some free time. Is there something I can do for the community?" You don't normally hear that from people their age. So, the Scouts program is phenomenal. I'm going to talk about the Women's Awards for the Boy Scouts Luncheon that we had this afternoon. But right now, having the girls be able to attain the Eagle Award is something I had hoped for for a lot of years. The girls go through the same path to the Golds Award, but when you get to the Golds Award, I hand you a Gold Award. When you get to the Eagle Award, you become an Eagle. There's a different recognition and distinguished honor, I think, to the Eagle Award than there ever was to the Golds Award. So, now that the girls can actually attain that same award... We had one of the young girls speaking today, and when you listen to what she's doing and how she got involved in all the activities that she always wanted to be involved in but couldn't, it was amazing. So, I really give them a lot of credit. She said that the boys have accepted her. There's no problem with that, and she's just having a great time. So, thank you to all the parents that support our Eagles and to all the leaders that spent years with them in some difficult trying situations, but they get to that point where they can attain that, and it's wonderful.
Thank you. Press, do you want to say anything or no? No? Okay. All right, we are moving on to number seven, public hearings. The final adoption of ordinance 21-05, amending speed limits established along County Route 633 under resolutions entitled "Establishing Speed Limits on Kemal Lake Road, County Route 633 in the Township of Frankfurt" dated October 11, 1983, and "Establishing Speed Limits on Kemal Lake Road, County Route 633 in the Township of Hampton" dated September 27, 1983." I need a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just got a quick note. I did get a call from a Frankfurt resident, and they were appreciative of lowering that speed limit. That it is a very windy road and dangerous road, so that's all.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is open to the public for anyone that wishes to speak on the final adoption of ordinance 2105. Seeing no one come forward, I would like a motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next, I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
Standby.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Pass. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is the first of two public sessions. This is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. The microphone's right over there. Please stand near the microphone, state your name, municipality, and for the record, the agenda topic that you'll be addressing tonight. So, I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is open. For agenda items, please.
Gregory Poff, Byram Township, New Jersey. Oh, well. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing my fellow scouts from Troop 276, Josh Rubenstein and Adam Raffey. I know they appreciated you being present at their Eagle Court of Honor, as all our Eagle Scouts do. And I'd also like to comment on Agenda Item 13A. It's the authorization for the County of Sussex to apply for the American Rescue Plan, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds from the United States Treasury Department in the amount of $27,288,147. I would just like to ask the Board of County Commissioners to consider allocating an appropriate amount of money from that fund to go towards small businesses that were negatively affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward for public session on agenda items, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number nine is Commissioner comments. We will start with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to be brief, as brief can be today. So, the county, I spoke with Bill Copenall. Every year, the county takes on usually about one bridge a year. This year, it's going to be Phillips Road in Frankfurt. Obviously, living there, it's been out for a good five years, six years probably. So, I talked to him. I asked a bunch of questions. What's the benefit of the county doing it other than a contractor, subcontractor, general contractor? The savings is enormous. It's probably five times less than hiring a contractor. So, they either do the in-house engineering themselves or they do a split with another firm, but that's going to be starting very soon. And I'm actually going to be happy to check that out again in my hometown. So, I think that's pretty neat. Paving the roads, obviously throughout the county, a lot of roads have been paved, a lot of guide rail has been replaced. We did get some correspondence from a Beamer Ville resident. They were very happy with the job that Riverview Paving did. So, kudos to them, and kudos to our engineer department for getting good vendors and contractors to do the work. I think our roads, being a driver in the state of New Jersey all over the place, the roads in our county are second to none. They are. I mean, drives me up the wall hitting a pothole, you know, spilling your coffee, your drink, or your food on you while you're driving. And we don't have that problem here. So, they're well-maintained. Couple completions on our road, Myrtle Grove Road, County Route 626, Glenwood to Martin Station Road, County Route 565, and County Route 633 to 622, also known as Lewisburg Road. I spoke briefly with some of you guys. I was working with Jim Pruzniewski in the CWA with a direct hire. I'm hoping to have that ready to go at our next meeting. It's something that you all have been working on before my time here, including my predecessor, Josh Hertzberg. So, I think we're going to be putting that to bed, and I'm looking forward to that and getting that accomplished. Memorial Day weekend's coming up. It's very important that we remember what it's about. It's about our service members who we lost during the war. Obviously, people like to have a party and celebrate that, but we all need to keep that in mind and let our children know and our grandchildren know what it's really about, the sacrifice that these people did in our honor. And just one more thing, just to address our meetings. I just want to talk about our in-person meetings. The driving factor behind our decision to return to traditional face-to-face meetings is a decrease in the number of COVID-positive cases in our county. Now, that is unquestionably safe to do so. We must be together as a board in the same room to discuss county business and make crucial decisions. The dialogue which happens at these meetings is extremely important to the well-being of our county, and this simply is no suitable substitute for face-to-face communication. We are more productive as a board when we are in the same room and can perform the duties. We have elected, we are elected to perform to the best of our ability to make the most of our time together. This board will be meeting in person going forward. We do so in order to best serve you, you all out here. There are times when elected officials must make decisions that do not please everyone, but in the end, they are the best interest of the people, and this is one of those times. The good news is that New Jersey is coming back up. It's opening back up, I'm sorry. This board believes that we must help continue the momentum to restore the physical, mental, and economic health of our state. We need to go back to work, and our children need to return to school. Remaining in a quasi-lockdown is no longer wise nor necessary. It's time for New Jersey to get back on its feet, and we in Sussex County plan to intend to lead the way. Even our governor has lifted our indoor mask mandate as key COVID-19 benchmarks have been achieved. Social distancing requirements and gathering limits have also been decreased. This board plans to be at the forefront of New Jersey's pandemic recovery, and we want to show everyone by our example that it's safe to resume like it used to be nearly 15 months ago. As a representative of the constituents of Sussex County, I refuse to hide behind a camera and keyboard any longer. I hope you will join me in bringing Sussex County and the great state of New Jersey back to life. This is something I believe in. I feel deeply in my heart that we can get more work together face-to-face, you know, even having a short conversation in person to plan on our next meetings and so forth, subcommittees and things that we've been lacking. Again, I've been here for, going on, five months, and there's nothing better than talking to you guys in person. You could see, sense people's passion other than sit behind a computer. Besides that, I mean, the overlapping, the butting into... Terry's job will be so much easier this way. And again, you know, I reached out to a couple municipalities and school boards, and they're back. If they are back in person, there is no hybrids. There's nothing like that going on that I've heard so far. So, I know it might be a topic coming up tonight, and I just wanted to start by saying that. That is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Patillo?
Thank you. This evening, I would like to mention a few of our health clinics. And these health clinics are all scheduled and at the Public Health Nursing at 201 Reitzworth Road in Hamburg. The first one is a women's health screening that'll be held on Thursday, June 3, from 4:30 to 8:30 PM at Public Health Nursing. And the number to call for an appointment is 973-579-0570, extension 1246. Another important hearing is the Senior Services Annual Public Hearing. It'll be via Zoom. It's on Thursday, June 3, from 1:30 to 3:00. And if you want an appointment, you would have to call it 973-579-0555, extension 1222. And lastly, the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program that we have every year. It begins on the 1st of June. The program provides eligible seniors with $30 in vouchers to be used at local participating farm stands. And for specific qualifications, please contact Senior Services Being Memorial Day is this weekend. It was really an interesting afternoon. I spent it with the 26th Annual Sussex County Tribute to Women Awards Luncheon today. And I would like to thank and congratulate the three honorees for their commitment and dedication to their communities and their support of the Boy Scouts of America. The awardees were Dean at Marie Smith from Wantage and Sean Stinat from Vernon. The reason Memorial Day was important to this luncheon was because Councilwoman Dawn Roberts from Apaccon, our Gold Star Mother, was also honored. And I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about Dawn and the son that she lost in Afghanistan. Dawn and I met under extraordinarily emotional circumstances when her son, Sergeant Michael Kerspell Jr., United States Army, was killed in action while serving his country in Afghanistan on October 27, 2010. As mayor of Apaccon, Congressman Rodney Friedenheisen's office informed me of Michael's death. Immediately, the Apaccon Police Chief and I drove together to Dawn and Chris Roberts' home. And from that moment on, Dawn and I became very close friends. Dawn was devastated over the loss of her son. At times, the pain and the grief seemed too much to bear. But over time, she realized that the only way that she could move on was to live her life in a manner that honored Michael's service and sacrifice, a life that gives back to others. And that is exactly what she has done. Her devotion to Michael compelled her to move beyond her own grief and touch the lives of so many people. We'd have to be here for hours if I was to go into all of the different organization and ways that this woman has worked with our military, our military families, and people that were trying to deal with the loss of their child. But Michael's story will always remind me of the great sacrifice our men and women in the armed forces are ready to make every day to protect us and the freedoms we enjoy. Getting to know Dawn and watching how she has suffered and continues to suffer over the loss of her son is heartbreaking. But what brings her through is knowing that people care about her son's sacrifice and our military. When Apaccon, in the spring of 2011, planned Michael's community memorial service, she became very anxious because she was afraid that people would not attend. She kept asking me, "Do you really think anybody cares?" Well, on the day of Michael's community memorial service, Apaccon's Veterans Park was packed with people from all over the county, and it was their presence that gave her peace. It is important to military families, veterans, and our children to attend the services in the county. Remind all your friends to take a little time out of their planned activities and acknowledge the sacrifices made to protect the freedom they enjoy so much. Speak to your children so they will honor our armed forces, respect our flag, and thank God for our great country, the United States of America. If you are looking for a memorial service to attend, everyone is welcome to come to Apaccon's memorial service this Saturday at Veterans Park, which is on Flora Avenue in Apaccon, at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Commissioner Yardley?
Oh, thank you. I want to start out by saying I attended the Veterans... Salute to veterans on Saturday. Assuming you're going to talk about that, Dawn?
If you'd like to talk about it, I'll...
No, I...
That would be fine.
I'm going to let you talk about it because many times, you're more eloquent than I am. But I want to say it was a great event. Hopefully, more people will become more aware of it. We can help promote it. It was just a very, an opportunity to say thank you to the veterans that alive and dead and those that are serving. I do want to, I do have a report that, okay, the Veterans Interment Officer organized and distributed flags to the veterans, various veterans organizations, and they placed them on different graves for Memorial Day. May's Elder Americans Month, and a couple things. Apaccon Nutrition Site held a luncheon for their people. Vernon Nutrition held a luncheon also. And Franklin Nutrition Sites holding their special luncheon on June 1 because they're doing some construction. And Sparta Seniors had something every Thursday for the month of May. Public Health Nursing continued to address coronavirus. Positive cases are entered in the CDRSS system. The communicable disease reports, there were 169 communicable diseases. And Lyme's disease continues to be the most investigated disease at 110 cases. And if you walk in the woods, and it seems you can just walk around your property, a little high grass, you seem to be getting ticks. We had 105 animal bite, excuse me. There have been 105 domestic or wild animal bites reported. And these are bites from dogs, cats, bats, raccoons, roosters, groundhogs, and one case, and there's been one case of rabies. And there are two other cases involving bats. Bats have always been a problem in the county. And I wanted to mention that there was a hearing, but... And there was an article out by the Republican Budget Members. And there were some comments about the Commissioner of Health and refusal to answer some questions and to repeal outdated policy. I just want to read a few things. Just says, "No, we have been trying to get information from the state of New Jersey in regards to what happened at the nursing home." And it continues to be a problem because what has been cited for the last year is that because of the coronavirus and the emergency, they do not have to answer a request. So, just going to read a couple things. "During the time of crisis, it's important that the public have faith that their leaders are telling them the truth. The Murphy Administration, however, has hidden behind expanded public health emergency exemptions that were never intended to limit transparency in this matter. Even today, we couldn't get, they couldn't get clear answers on basic questions, including what could have been done better." Other participants, including family advocates, family members, were shocked and outraged that the Commissioner refused to appear and answer questions about various directives ordered by her departments. That's the State Department of Health, including orders to nursing homes to admit COVID-positive patients. When asked to acknowledge, this is just, I'm not reading the whole thing. These are just different paragraphs. You can go online to find this. "When asked to acknowledge that many current health restrictions are outdated, the Commissioner refused to say they would be repealed." So, it's outrageous that administration continues to hang on to almost 2,000 pages of rules, regulations, and restrictions that simply no longer make sense. The Commissioner essentially said today, during the meeting, that as long as there is any level of COVID, they will perpetuate the restrictions. Since COVID is likely at some very minor level, its epidemic at this point means the restrictions go on forever. So, in other words, we could have, we could go into September or the end of December on anything the governor feels is a threat to the public safety and health of the state of New Jersey, even if all other states open up and we continue to be closed. I just wanted to let everyone know that the legislature in District 24 continues to press the state to get the information on the nursing homes. It is not, it is very interesting that if you go online, that there are narratives about the nursing home and that there were violations that have been corrected. We're asking for communications, and the federal government has their inspections online. New Jersey doesn't do it. And if you follow the policy and the directions of the state of New Jersey, you have to file an Oprah Request, and you're supposed to get them. As of this point, it's been almost a year. We still haven't done it. And I say to this board that as soon as this COVID, the governor finally says, "No more executive orders. The emergency is over," which I don't know if he's ever going to do, that we institute a legal action to get this stuff immediately and take it to Superior Court. We have waited a year, and I'm not the only one complaining. It is not the county the only one complaining. The newspapers are unable to get this information. And I just think we need to take action so that we can finally find out what happened at that nursing home. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fasano?
Thank you, Director Fantasia, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. And before I start, I just wanted to acknowledge the comment made earlier by Ms. And before I start, I just wanted to acknowledge the comment made earlier by Mr. Poff, who brought up some good points, suspiciously good points, as if maybe you knew somebody who worked for the county. Your points, though, are excellent, particularly small businesses here in Sussex County impacted by the pandemic. And I can't speak for the board, and certainly the board has not had the level of in-depth conversations regarding the American Rescue Plan that would bring me a sense of comfort just yet. But I do feel very comfortable in terms of saying to you and other county residents who may feel the same, that businesses, particularly small businesses in Sussex County who have struggled throughout this pandemic, need to be a focus and need to be a key stakeholder of what we're doing with American Rescue Plan funding, and I expect that to happen. I do have a few quick updates. First and foremost, Sussex County continues to see encouraging numbers, as was mentioned by Commissioner Carney regarding COVID-19 in terms of our daily case counts and our vaccination numbers. As of today, the state of New Jersey is reporting 72,776 county residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine, with well over 61,000 county residents now being fully vaccinated. I'm sure it will be discussed more this evening and the coming days ahead, but due to the decreases in demand, Sussex County is transitioning from our vaccination site at the county fairgrounds to pop-up vaccination clinics located throughout the county, offering the Moderna and the J&amp;J vaccine. Sussex County is working with all of our municipalities on scheduling these clinics, which will help get the vaccine into our communities and represents another positive step in our county's vaccination efforts. More information about our vaccination efforts, along with more information about our free COVID-19 testing program and daily updates, can all be found on our county COVID-19 webpage, which is simply sussex nj.us/covid19. Last week, Sussex County received some positive news from Standard Empowers, who rated the county double A-plus with a stable financial outlook. That report further detailed the county's strong economy, with strong management and good financial policies in place, and it also highlighted strong budgetary performance, flexibility, liquidity, and institutional framework. I'm very proud of that. I do have to tap my kid, tip my cap to Elka Yetter and Greg Poff, your father, and their teams for outstanding work in keeping Sussex County financially stable and strong even in the midst of a global pandemic. So well done to you. The Sussex County Library System is pleased to announce that effective June 1st, in just a few days, appointments will no longer be necessary for branch visits at all locations. And the way that this will work is all locations will be open to the public at 10:00 a.m., then close at 11:45 to disinfect frequently touched surfaces, and reopen at noon. All locations will close again at 1:45 to 2 for additional cleaning, then remain open until 3:45. Branches with evening hours will reopen at 4 and close from 5:45 to 6 for one more round of disinfection, and then remain open until 7:45 p.m. Building capacity will be monitored, and the public will be asked to wait if capacity exceeds 50% for now. Our library system in Sussex County is extremely popular, and I'm thrilled to see these big steps to return to normal, to get back into the library. And finally, as was mentioned a few times this evening, I do want to wish you all a wonderful Memorial Day weekend coming up, as we remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Thank you, Dawn, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm going to apologize in advance, I had a technology mishap, and my laptop took a dive. So I'm missing a couple of my documents that I was meant to print out from a document, from a device that took a dive. So I am going to reference my phone a couple of times to pull up a couple of documents that I had emailed, just to make sure I get the information out to everybody, but it is my pet peeve to have anyone on the phone during a meeting, so I apologize in advance. First, to address the request from the young gentleman regarding dedicating some of the American Rescue Plan funds for small businesses. I know I represent one vote of five. I know that we have a lot of work to do once we have it solidified, that those are indeed the funds that are coming, and I am one vote that fully supports that without wavering. Other counties really were very fortunate to be recipients of first rounds of funding from the federal government. I know, for instance, county, Monmouth County, for instance, was able to issue small grants to their businesses during the height of the pandemic. These are things that the smaller counties were not able to even consider, so the money that was available to us was not even proportionate. So for me, that is my number-one priority when we do sit together and discuss with our professionals where, you know, money is needed to cover some of the coronavirus impact expenses. But thank you for bringing that up tonight, and we will certainly keep the public posted, and we will be having, obviously, public forums to gather public feedback about what you feel are the most pressing needs in the community. And of course, how we spend that money must be in alignment and be approved, you know, an approved use of those funds. So I'm going to hop right into the report regarding COVID. I can say that this is a huge milestone this week. Yesterday, we had four positive cases in the county of Sussex. Today, we had eight positive cases in the county of Sussex. We are now in single digits for reporting. That is not something that we, you know, we thought we wouldn't see that for quite a while, so this is absolutely moving in a very, very good direction. Again, the state and county have reached the point where the demand for vaccines has quickly declined. So just as Anthony had mentioned, we have our COVID-19 pop-up vaccination clinics. They're offering Moderna and the J&amp;J vaccine. They're going to be in Frankfurt on June 11th, I'm sorry, June 1st, Sandiston, June 2nd, Ogdenburg, June 3rd, Sparta, June 7th, and Newton, June 9th. And you can get all the specifics on the county website. Also, if you would like a transportation, it's available through Skyland's Ride, and there are no appointments necessary. So how quickly that changed as vaccinations became widely available. I do want to point out, many people were asking about children, students aged 12 to 15, because they were not, you know, included. And now we are aware that the Pfizer vaccine is available, and Atlantic Health Systems is working in cooperation with the county to be able to vaccinate students aged, children, I'm saying students as in, still at school right now, children ages 12 and older. So they are also working in cooperation with Norvuscap, Pathways to Prosperity, and Project Self-Sufficiency, to offer the J&amp;J vaccine free of charge to those who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, or precariously housed. So again, please visit the county website, or you can call Nick Kapitakis at 973-940-5200, extension 1287. So again, we still have free-at-home test kits offered through the county of Sussex, through Vault Medical Services, that is the saliva test, and LabCorp is the nasal test, still available, still free of charge to Sussex County residents. So as we move forward, please pay attention to the swift updates that change, they rapidly change, coming out of Trenton for the governor's updates regarding masking and quarantining. Lama Shaddad, Sussex County Epidemiologist, reports a marked decrease in the total number of cases. So there are two new reported outbreaks in schools currently, two new ones, and there are seven confirmed outbreaks in total and one suspected outbreak. So as of May 25th, there are two confirmed active outbreaks in long-term care facilities with a very low number of cases linked to that, just so you're aware. Again, long-term care facilities comprised of 44% of our county deaths from COVID-19, and our death number in the county due to coronavirus is at 134 currently. In the month of May, Newton Medical Center is reporting a total of 19 COVID-related hospitalizations. So that is my COVID update, and as we move towards an endemic response versus a pandemic response, everything, you know, will change, and we'll certainly keep the public posted as best that we can.
Dawn, is that 134 number for long-term care facility?
No, that's total. Forty-four percent of that is long-term care facilities, so in doing the math, what is that, 670, 670 residents somewhere in that ballpark, I would say. Okay, so next, as Freeholder Yardley had stated, he and I and Commissioner Fasano attended the salute to veterans put on by the Sussex Elks Lodge. It was beautiful to see everyone in person. They stuck to all of the traditions. They did the dinner following that was free of charge to the veterans. They made a beautiful book that commemorated the names of everyone who has served and had submitted their name in the county for recognition. They did the salute and the presenting of the colors. It was a really beautiful memorial, the presentation of the wreath. We had World War II veterans there, Vietnam veterans, Vietnam-era veterans, veterans of the Korean War, their families, those of lost loved ones. And it was a beautiful day, beautiful weather. We want to thank Rebecca Heath specifically, who is the superintendent of the park up there up at High Point. They always so graciously work with the group. So it was, it was a beautiful day. And also, there are many, many Memorial Day observances happening across the county. If you are active on social media, please, you know, take a look at some of the different fire departments and different town websites. I know Franklin just had their council meeting last night, and they did approve their traditional parade starting at 10:00 a.m., kicking off at 10:00 a.m. from the VFW. So I ask that, you know, it's really something great to get out and see the, have your children see. I'll be attending Franklin and, you know, the board, I'm sure, will keep us posted as to where, where we're all going. Last Friday, I was invited to attend an announcement. The governor came up here along with Congressman Gottheimer to announce some pretty important news that we were quite hopeful would come through. There was a bill co-sponsored by Senator Steve Oraho and Senator Troy Singleton to establish a commission to research what it would take, the cost of the parameters of providing a broadband for rural areas and low socioeconomic areas. We know that studies have shown that over 20% of residents of Sussex and Warren County have either no internet or not steady, strong internet available, and it affects businesses. It affects schools. A school, actually, after I had shared some information about this online, a school in Sussex reached out to me to say thank you, and they thought it would have a serious impact on their students. And again, it was a real example of working across the aisle, and, you know, two state senators came together to serve their populations, and, you know, it resonated and is getting wide support. And we know that New Jersey is getting a significant amount of money coming for this specific purpose. So we look forward to developments on this and, you know, being able to support anything and everything that we can do to ensure internet connectivity for our residents, for our schools, and for our businesses. And I would like to thank Senator Oraho. I would like to thank Senator Singleton, and also the legislature, and the congressman and the governor, that everyone is actually on the same page to bring some of these resources back to northwest New Jersey, because we know that is oftentimes few and far between for us. Next, there is a pop-up produce market tomorrow. There's a bunch of groups that are working together, Forward Franklin, the Sparta Economic Council, and they do pop-up produce markets where they do a nutrition lesson, and you can come and bag some fresh produce. It'll be at Franklin Pond tomorrow, 2:30 to 4:30. It's first come, first served, so please come out. And I want to thank those volunteers and for their, for their efforts and for the farmers for their, for their donations, absolutely. In keeping with the farm angle, I have, was in receipt of something. I was contacted by District 24, a constituent had reached out who had somewhat of a farming enterprise and was interested in the county's review of it, and I forwarded it to Administrator Poff, and it should be in all of your emails. Obviously, if you can get the opportunity to read it, that would be great. And how it would even affect us at all, or what it would have to do with us, is this individual is interested in a rural business development grant program. Okay, so basically, it's a conceptual plan for a feasibility study and a prototype for actual implementation, but in order to have that kind of study, and it's a study for merging farming and technology together to make it more fruitful and productive, in order for us to be able, or in order for this individual to be able to do that, they would need a county, municipality, somebody to be willing to back that application for the grant, for that. So District 24 contacted us to see if we would take a look at it, to see if it's something that we're interested in. And upon my first reading, I think it sounds exciting, and it sounds like a phenomenal opportunity for not only the county but the state. So it could be a real economic boost specifically for our farmers. So anyhow, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know that's relatively new. Coming to us, what else do we have here? Okay, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority announced the reopening of pre-registration of Phase IV of the Small Business Emergency Assistance Grant Program. So on Wednesday, May 26th, at 9:00 a.m., okay, it was announced the allocation of 200 million in additional funds to help fulfill Phase IV grant applications will now be available. So that 200 million in additional funds, and if you've been following, because each phase, the county and I myself also have been putting out this information, this supports the most adversely affected businesses in New Jersey. So it has $20 million set aside for bars and restaurants, 120 million for micro businesses, 10 million for childcare providers, and 50 million for other small business nonprofits with up to 50 full-time employees. So again, it is, it is tiered. You can go on and preregister, is the only way that you can get in. And preregistration is actually open for a period of five weeks through June 30th. Okay, and then after that, applications are available following that time period. So I just want to definitely point out to everybody that grant awards are calculated based on the number of full-time employees, and you can have five or fewer employees and still qualify for a micro grant. You do have to show, so it's for small businesses and nonprofits, you do have to show that you've been negatively impacted during the declared state of emergency period to be eligible for this grant, and the governor is guaranteed that there's a really wide window to fall into the state of emergency, so I think many, many will qualify for that. This includes businesses that have been temporarily shut, reduced hours, had a 20% drop in revenue. So please, again, check our website, it's very important. The application is available in multiple languages, and there are people who are actually live, if you call, to actually speak. I believe there's 10 different languages that they're offering assistance in for business owners. So please, please, check that out if you are a business that has been affected or a nonprofit. Very important. Now, this is the part that I talked about where I have to reference the tiny device here to make sure that I get the information out to you. So there is another grant that is available that I just actually received today. Thank you, Terry, for sending that information to me, and I did share it with our Arts and Heritage Council as well. Okay, so what this is, is $15 million in federal COVID-19 relief aid for arts and culture venues throughout New Jersey. So it makes $7.5 million available to the State Arts Council. So next week, they're going to be announcing the formal guidelines, and as you know, our, you know, little studio over there in Newton has taken a hit. We have lost a small amount of revenue, you know, that we have been able to receive, and some programs have gone digital, and we really want to make sure that the Arts and Heritage Council remains vibrant in the county and even continues to expand. So that was good news, and I'm sure our, you know, we'll have further conversations about that and the potential for applying for such aid for the arts. We also received our, from Elka, from the Finance Committee. Our revenues at this time are about what we expected to see. We're still feeling the effects of the pandemic, but we did budget quite conservatively, knowing that this was the situation that we were in. So as usual, some of our... So as usual, some of our items are front-loaded. We recognize grants as soon as we pass the budget. We move them over to the grant fund. All of our pension bills were paid in April. We've encumbered the full year for the tech school and the college, so those are fully expended. So we're about over 50% paid on, on our debt service as well at this point and we're in May. So we are actually in very, you know, very good shape and thank you. I want to thank Elka and her team and I want to thank Greg for that as well. Now, one more thing I wanted to point out, as you know, with the vaccination sites, our OEM and Public Health Nursing are completing the necessary paperwork to submit our vaccination site costs to FEMA to get our reimbursement for that. So that's also moving according to, according to plan and according to schedule. So looking here, and I believe that that sums up what I had for this evening. And again, I apologize for being a little all over the place, but sometimes hard copy works a little bit better than, than devices at times. We're discovering that. All right, so we are going to move on to number 10. This is the approval of the consent agenda. It is items number, or I'm sorry, letter A through G. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. All right, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda A through G.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, pass. Number 11, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, May 12th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Number 12, appointments and/or resignations. And this is the piece where 12A, I believe
Correct.
is being removed to be considered separately. Then we have B and C. So what I need first, we will do a motion to adopt resolutions B and C under 12.
Make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
So any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Pass. Okay, now on to 12A. I will need a motion and a second and then we will go to discussion.
Make the motion. Second.
Thank you. And a second? Okay, now discussion?
This, this is an acknowledgement of the appointment of a member to this Kenny Community College Search Committee by the administrator. So I'm going to ask council, what this resolution is, is basically the person has been selected by the administrator and we are acknowledging the fact that he selected the person. We have no authority over that selection. Is that correct? Are we entitled to a resume?
You were provided.
I, I didn't see it in my notes. Okay, we were provided.
The answer to that, yes.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Kevin, can you please explain statutorily how this is, how this is possible? Because again, for the record, Administrator Poff did submit to us before it became part of the agenda. I received a full breakdown of this individual before it came on the agenda for discussion. Had a discussion with Administrator Poff about it, had a discussion and also, you know, wanted to check on some of the professional experiences of the individual on the search committee. Now, keep in mind, this is not a member of the actual board. This is the search committee who searches for members of the board. But I was comfortable again because Administrator Poff, although I believe according to code does not, you know, enjoys the ability to do that, that is not at all the case of what happened. I received with plenty of time the individual. So, I mean, statutorily, can you explain? How that that is beyond the realm of, or the approval of the board and it actually is the administrator's appointment and we acknowledge the appointment for the search
So it is by statute?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Now, the individual's name, who it is, for some reason, isn't on the actual resolution, but her name is Rhonda Owansky.
Right.
And I believe she is from Sandiston Township, if memory serving me correctly from, from what I pulled, so.
I thought it was on the resolution.
I'm sorry. On my little paper here, I don't have it. What I'm saying is it's included in our, in our big packet, but not on this single piece of paper. Is there any other discussion regarding the appointment of Rhonda Owansky to the, no?
No, the search committee.
Search committee. Okay, so we had a motion and a second and a discussion. So for 12A, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, pass. Okay, number 13 is resolutions. And again, it is now resolutions A through E. F has been tabled as we are waiting for answers to be provided by June 4th. So I need a motion to adopt resolutions A through E.
Excuse me, Director.
Yes.
Did I miss your motion to approve B and C?
We did that first.
We did that.
We did that prior to A. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move it.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is for 13A through E, correct?
Correct, A through E. And again, under this, A is the authorization for the County of Sussex to apply for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds in the amount of $27 million plus dollars. Okay, no discussion? Roll call, Terry, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yarke?
Yes.
Pass. Okay, now we're on to number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. So I need a motion to adopt the contracts A through E.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yarke?
Yes.
All right, on to number 15, financial. It's a resolution regarding payment of the bills list, May 26th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the bills list.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, roll call?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yarke?
Yes.
Okay, number 16, personnel. It's a resolution regarding authorizing the personnel agenda of May 26th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yarke?
Yes.
All right, number 17 is our administrative report.
Thank you, Director. I certainly don't mean to be repetitive, but there were a few items mentioned by the commissioners this evening that do bear worth repeating. I will be as concise as possible. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the county's bond rating. Last week, S&amp;P Global affirmed the county's AA+ rating on the county's general obligation debt outstanding, supported by and based on the county's pledge of ad valorem taxes. In addition to the AA rating, they provided us a stable outlook in the short term. The AA long-term rating reflects the county's very strong economy, strong management with good financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance with balanced operating results in the current fund in fiscal year 2020, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and strong institutional framework score. I'm very pleased to report that all of those things were identified as either strong or very strong, particularly given the challenges of managing the county organization through this pandemic. So I'm very pleased with the results and what S&amp;P Global had to say about the county's operation. And again, would also like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Elka Yeder, for her efforts in securing that rating. As the 2020 resurfacing program has been completed, the 2021 resurfacing program is currently under development within the Division of Engineering. The program is anticipated to resurface approximately 34.8 miles of county roads. Work performed under this program will include some or all of the preliminary routes with the final scope of work to be determined based upon bid prices and available funding. As was also mentioned about the pop-up vaccination clinics, Sussex County is transitioning to pop-up clinics. As the demand for vaccine has declined, appointments for first dose vaccinations are no longer available at the fairgrounds vaccination site, but the county has moved forward with establishing several pop-up clinics at various locations throughout the county. And I was very pleased just this afternoon to receive an update from the Division of Health that we have a total of seven clinics scheduled throughout the county, beginning June 1st through June 14th. And there will be additional information provided as more clinics are scheduled, but we are very happy to be able to get out into the municipalities and be able to provide these vaccines to our residents. If a member of the public is interested in getting vaccinated, they are asked to contact the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1211. Again, that number is 973-579-0570, extension 1211. And again, I would like to thank the commissioners for authorizing the application for the American Rescue Plan funds this evening. I'm pleased to report that the application package has been completed and was awaiting your authorization. So we are in a position to submit that first thing tomorrow morning. And as was reported at the last board meeting, each commissioner now has received on the table in front of you, a reference guide which includes an analysis prepared by the National Association of Counties, the Federal Treasury's Quick Reference Guide, frequently asked questions that were, that was just updated as of yesterday, as well as the interim final rule itself. I will say, spend some time looking at NACO's analysis and not going through the 151 pages. Put me to sleep three times. So again, I would strongly recommend the analysis prepared by NACO. We have scheduled the first internal stakeholders meeting for next Tuesday, following our agenda meeting, where staff will be coming together to be able to look at what the regulations are, have some discussions about the eligible projects that have been pending with the various departments, so that when the commissioners have the opportunity to discuss, we hopefully will have some suggestions and some thoughts to assist the commissioners in your deliberations. And I look forward to discussing this in greater detail with the board in the near future. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I wanted to comment on something. As we get the information as to what our parameters are or what's permissible, I think we'll then have a better idea how we could break it down into something that's easily digestible and not 100, you know, some pages, like you said, so the public can, can share, especially, you know, businesses, you know, people who've suffered from, you know, some of the, some of the worst effects of, of this from an economic recovery standpoint. So we would need to decide, I think, as a board, whether or not that would be information or what, what the mode would be to gather that information. Would it be multiple-pronged where, you know, people could submit online what their thoughts were? Would we hold, you know, a, a special meeting for it for the public, a forum? Would it be something that would be on a meeting where perhaps we don't have a, a heavy agenda with many items and we could add on an extended session? But I think as a board, we need to determine how we're going to gather, the best way to gather the most public feedback for what our residents need so we can kind of tailor where our approach is, you know, to, to spending these funds. So just a thought. All right, next we have county council report. Okay, thank you. Now unfinished business, number 19, I have unfinished business. I think this might be a good time to bring up, Kevin was able to research for us exactly what Chris had talked about rotating. And statutorily, we are not bound here to vote in, you know, in that particular order. It's just for the initial calling of the roll must be in that order. But as far as voting, there is zero precedent set. So we do not need to pass a formal resolution. What we do need to do is have a motion just to adopt a rotating voting roll call effective beginning next meeting. It's as simple as that. So no pomp and circumstance at all necessary for this, other than I would need a motion. And again, if anyone would like to discuss before we get to that point, thoughts?
I would love to make that motion.
I could tell. Any other discussion points? So Commissioner Carney made the motion. I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting a rotating voting roll call beginning next meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, pass. Thank you, Kevin, for that, for that information for us. Does any other commissioner have old business they would like to discuss? Okay, moving on to number 20, new business. Any new business? All right, number 21, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet of social distance with other attendees. Please stand near the microphone, state your name and your municipality for the record. And I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the floor is open for public comment on non-agenda items.
Hi, Kate Salerina in the flesh, Sparta. Just want to know why there's not a hybrid Zoom option being offered for these meetings. Commissioner Carney, I heard your comments loud and clear about wanting to be in person. Clearly, we are and we're, I feel we're capable of doing that and you guys being able to get together easily after the meeting or whatever you want to do, but also offering a hybrid option. I also wanted to just make sure that I made my face known here because I don't want to be considered a phone warrior or anything like that. to be considered a phone warrior or anything like that. And I want to be here, and I want to participate. I want to know what's going on in the county. I actually do find this very interesting, whatever you want to believe about me or pretend to believe about what you know about me. But I think that it's kind of like a really obvious win, again, for you guys, and in bipartisan fashion, as I've been asking for from this board since January, to offer a hybrid option, given everything that's happened, the fact that a lot of people who have been participating this year are people who have things like incurable cancer, health issues that have nothing to do with COVID, but that put them at risk, make it so that they can't get vaccinated, things like that. So like I said, especially when you have this whole thing that you did with Senator Rojo and Governor Murphy, where you were talking about broadband internet access, making things more accessible for the members of this county and this community, this is an easy win for you guys. Just make the hybrid option available. Make it so that all of the community can speak. Otherwise, again, this just comes off as kind of a suppression tactic, and it, and honestly, and this is my real thing, is I would like to ask the question as to why you're not offering the hybrid option, if there's a reason not to. Yeah, because, you know, this is dinnertime, you know, we have kids, we have lives, we have jobs, we're not commissioners. Okay, so I know that you guys plan this stuff according to your schedules, but again, the community wants to be involved. I don't know what is funny about that. Is that funny for some reason?
You can continue.
I would love to know what's funny.
Continue.
Okay, hopefully you can let me know what's funny also at the end, that'd be great. Yeah, I just, I know none of you want this. We'd like to be able to participate, so that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mick DiPiano from Newton. She said, I have been calling for hybrid option since January. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
All right, yes, Mick DiPiano from Newton. I have been calling for my hybrid option since January, and I have accused this board of being anti-family. I am here again to call you anti-family. I've had to drag my kid at bedtime here to speak to you, where I was able to put her to bed while participating in community events. This is just oppression of people you don't want to hear from, and numerous commissioners have made comments over the course of the last several months that have stated the only reason we're having in-person meetings is so that we can have nice, it's hard to be mean when we're looking at you face to face. Well, I can tell you in your face, you're anti-family. And Carney, you spoke about not knowing about some towns in our county having hybrid, sorry, hybrid and virtual options. There's still many towns and school boards who have it, so maybe you shouldn't talk if you don't know anything about the topic, but you are the party of fake news, so I'm not very surprised you would just say whatever regardless of what a fact is. So I want to know, why, why do you want to suppress people from coming? Are you happy to see this few people participating? Is that what you're after? Are you technologically incapable of providing a hybrid option? And are you glad to see children missing their bedtimes? I would, again, demand that you have hybrid options. It's not just about families, it's about people with healthcare issues, it's about people with elder care issues. There's a large swath of people who can't participate when you switch to fully online or fully in-person option, and it's strictly unfair, and it's not helpful to the community. Thank you.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I just wanted to say, along with these other people, that the Zoom option was very helpful for me. As a senior citizen who has vision problems, I have great difficulty getting here to a night meeting. Luckily, my husband is here teaching tonight, so I was able to get here, but many times I'm not able to attend a meeting because I cannot, I cannot drive at night. And the Zoom option worked great for me because I was able to find out what was going on and able to attend a meeting. And so I would wish you would keep also senior citizens in mind, as well as other people, when you think about, maybe you could do a hybrid and include the Zoom option again for some people like myself who may need it. And I just wanted to say really quickly, at the last meeting, there was discussion about changing voting options in the state and in the county. I don't understand why we need to do something when there's no problem. Why are we fixing something that's not broken? We all know that considering COVID and everything that went on, elections went very well, and anyone who thinks they did not go very well is just part of a lie. I think we need to encourage people to vote, not discourage them. I think we need to increase voting time, increase mail-in, and I personally feel it should be a national holiday. Everyone should have the day off, and everyone therefore would have more of a chance to vote. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Michael Lemmons, I'm representing Atlantic Health. I'm the EMT Education Coordinator for Atlantic Health, and one of my primary responsibilities there is initial education. We do a significant amount of initial education. We have training facilities in Morris County, Union County, Warren County, Passaic County, and we also provide a comprehensive selection of refreshers and continuing education for EMTs across northern New Jersey. Atlantic's very active in Sussex County. Newton Medical Center is the only acute care facility hospital in Sussex County. We provide medical oversight to many volunteer agencies, as well as all police departments in the county, and we're also very active in the New Jersey EMS Council District, which represents Sussex County. Atlantic has always enjoyed a close relationship with Edna Deacon and the Sussex County Community College EMT Education Program. We have a number of our own instructors at Atlantic that came through Edna's program over the years. For the last couple of years, we've been very happy to provide the program, the use of our training facilities at Atlantic's Newton Medical Center, and we've done so completely free of any charges. Recently, we heard that Edna was planning to retire, so we began to internally discuss how we could continue to provide initial EMT education to the residents of Sussex County. We're prepared to move forward quickly to provide initial EMT education at Newton Medical Center this fall. We have a fairly short window to meet state requirements, to schedule a class, and we would greatly appreciate, and it's our real desire, to have a relationship with Sussex County and with the college in order to provide the education. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you and hopefully being able to work with you.
Thank you, thank you for your.
Excuse me, do you have a card?
Yes.
I also, if you check your email?
Yes.
I forwarded Mr. Lemmons' information. When it came in, I also forwarded it to our administrator.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Okay, I'm so happy to be here. Yesterday, when I was looking into what.
Can you, can you go back to the microphone?
Sure.
Because I, that's where you're supposed to be. Thank you.
Yesterday, when I was reviewing some of the information, thank you very much, and realized you were having a meeting tonight, we kind of went into even higher gear around planning, and thank you for the invitation, Dawn, when I sent you today, requesting some time with you, that I would hopefully be here tonight, and this has been very helpful to introduce myself at least in our program.
What I'd like to say, well, first I have a question, but then a statement.
Yes.
I have said before that not many positives have come out of the coronavirus pandemic, but one really was the County of Sussex and the college becoming closer with Atlantic Health. We really worked, you know, as partners in so many ways, and we're very thankful and grateful that that relationship was able, you know, able to really grow in the best interest of the residents. My question to you is, has there been a preliminary conversation yet with the college regarding what that looks like with the retirement, or this is just in its infancy stage?
Right now, this is in its infancy. A comment came that related to the commissioners, and that's why I jumped right on it when I saw you had a meeting tonight and tried to meet with you to to bring it up. We have not yet reached out to the college itself, and that's my next step.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Fasano to be part of that conversation.
Yep.
To see, because he's been, you know, acting in that role with Dr. Connolly for some issues, so I think that that's a, that's a good fit.
Absolutely. That's terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for being here.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other member from the public come forward to speak, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to number 22. It is our consistent reminder to check the county's website. It really is a one-stop shop. Over the past year, I have to say it's undergone quite a metamorphosis, and the ease of use has increased. I'll be honest, coming on on the board a couple of years ago, I wasn't exactly thrilled, and I found some of it a bit cumbersome and maybe could have been organized in a different way, and it is always an evolving work in progress, but I'm very proud specifically of the ease of navigation for COVID-related issues for the for the Health Department. It really is a one-stop-shop landing page, to the point where Atlantic Health had even said that if you are looking, for instance, for a resource that would break down exactly where you could find vaccinations or where you could find testing or whatnot, they referred to the Sussex County website to do that. So that was, that was a proud moment for us. So there is no executive session this evening. So seeing that there is nothing else on our schedule again, I would like to thank all those who serve in the military, and again, as we, as we remember Memorial Day honors, honors the fallen. We have three very distinct days that we honor our military, and we have Armed Forces Day that honors those currently serving, we have Veterans Day that honors those who have served, and then we have Memorial Day, who honors those who never had the opportunity to come home due to their service, or perhaps they even passed stateside. So we thank the families of those who have passed as well for their resilience and for their courage and for the sacrifice that their families paid as well in defense of our freedoms and our liberties that we hold so dear. So thank you, please stay safe over the weekend. And again, we are moving in the right direction when it comes to our COVID numbers, single digits, folks. Let's keep it up, let's spread that word. So number 24 is an adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Director, I would just like to make a comment.
Yes.
Closing comment, closing remarks.
Absolutely.
Just back to Mrs. Salerno's, Salerno? Salerno? I wasn't laughing per se at you. What you need to understand, and everybody needs to understand, I have young kids too. So what I was laughing at in my head was my son saying to me, are you going to miss dinner again? So we don't make our own schedules up. The schedule is set. I'm not, I'm just saying a comment, I'm not looking to argue, I'm just making my two cents. So can I finish? Like I let you finish, let me finish, okay? So we have minutes, we have audio. That goes for everybody here, can can get online, they're posted the next day, two days later, worst-case scenario. So you're not missing anything. If we were going to keep that from anybody, well, then that would be a problem. But we are very transparent, okay? This schedule, this schedule, again, this schedule is, has been set.
This is not, just so we know, this is not a discussion back and forth? I give it to your comments after?
These are my closing comments.
It is not a public session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director.
I'd like to call for a vote on the motion.
For adjournment?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second? Yeah, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is closed, thank you, folks, get home safe.